I'm going to call the meeting order, it is five oh one. And this is a meeting for student success. I'm going to roll, we're going to do roll call. Erica Benavides Garcia, present. Jackie Navarro Ramos, absent. Cindy Guillermo, absent, absent. And Karina Elisono, absent, absent. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started with the new recruitment strategies. Mr. President, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment. Making the presentation will actually be Jessica Trevino and Julio Reyes.
Good afternoon, Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management.
Good afternoon, Julio Reyes, Director of Recruitment and Enrollment.
So this afternoon, we would like to present to you our current recruitment strategies. And what we are looking forward in completing the upcoming months as we lead into the fall twenty twenty-three registration and enrollment census date.
President, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment. Making the presentation will actually be Jessica Trevino and Julio Reyes.
Good afternoon, Jessica Trevino, Associate Vice President of Enrollment Management.
Good afternoon, Julio Reyes, Director of Recruitment and Enrollment.
So this afternoon, we would like to present to you our current recruitment strategies. And what we are looking forward in completing the upcoming months as we lead into the fall twenty twenty-three registration and enrollment census date.
So this is our team currently, we have myself as the director. We have our, I'm known for the university assistant director. We have Roxy, Rosa, and Edgar as our dual enrollment coordinators. And then as the recruiter, we do have Miss Anna Godin, Oscar, Luis, Eric, and Jackie. That is our, that compile the office of recruitment and enrollment.
So all of these positions eventually, we are hoping to rename for the fall of twenty twenty-three as enrollment coaches. So that everybody has that coach feeling out of the community and out of the high school. So that they're able to help with the enrollment process from point A to point C, which will be all from recruitment, admissions, financial aid, testing, advising, registration, turning over to orientation, and eventually depositing into twelfth class A here.
Was that a recommendation from the Noel Levitz team after today?
Yes, it is a recommendation from the Noel Levitz team. Initially, the thought was to rename these positions to enrollment specialists, kind of specializing in all of the enrollment process. However, yesterday, it was introduced to us enrollment coach with more of a relatability to the students coming in. So we are looking forward to enrollment coach.
And that was for the recruiters or for the dual enrollment coordinators?
So actually, it will be for everyone because everyone will be trade cross trained across the board. Eventually, we are hoping that we won't have that distinction. And everybody will be enrollment coaches and will be able to assist every student that walks through. So some of the recruitment practices currently taking place at the high school, we kind of separated them into groups at the high school and the off-campus slash community events that we're hosting. So at the high schools, we are looking forward to counselor updates where we gather counselors and our district partners to actually update them on any changes, admissions updates, financial aid updates that are happening. So that'll be coming up sometime late May, early June. In addition to that, we did host classroom presentations at the high school campuses. We continue to host high school tabling, meaning we go to our high school campuses with our partners and we're setting up a table at ease twice a week at every high school so that students have the accessibility to us at all times.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
For the high school tabling, you all have set dates that you go?
They are set, right? Like for the year, for the semester, or whatever?
So the recruiters are there part-time.
Yes, so we're also moving forward with hiring our Texas Work Study Mentorship Program mentors. And what they'll essentially be, they will be the mini enrollment coaches. I don't want to call them part-time because these are student coaches that'll be going to the high schools as well in support of the recruiters. So that if we're their two days full-time recruiters, the students will supplement maybe an additional day or two so that we try to cover as much time as we can at the high schools with presence from the Rito College.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, invitational departments. So we are also hosting some type of college fairs where the departments across college are coming and being exposed to the high school students. So you want to talk a little bit about that anyway?
So we are having events over at our high schools where we're actually inviting all our departments to join us. So we have these at different high schools and we're at the gym. They bring in all the seniors over to the gym, they park them, and it'll be more like of a college fair, but just an LC event. So they meet with every single department that is ever with us.
How many have you done?
We've done four. So we've done Morgan, Nixon, we've done United South, and we've done LBJ.
And have you had a good turnout?
We have because we bring out actually the whole senior class. And from our side, we've actually had a really good turnout also. Because what we did is before planning these events, we reached out to the departments to ask them what was the best time for them to be there. So we accommodated to our department, so we had more people there. We had over about over twenty tables that are getting set up.
Good, are they all getting moved?
We aren't getting moved.
But the, but the interest of the students is there whenever they actually get to meet either the faculty or the advisor of said program. And they have that hands-on experience with them. It's been really, really good, really fruitful. It is something we're hoping to institutionalize. Meaning, meaning we'll continue with these type of programs earlier on in the semester, hopefully in the fall, early fall semester, so that we gain that interest from the beginning. On campus testing, this is on-campus TSI testing for those schools that are not test sites. We have partnered with the Assessment Center and we have gone off-campus to actually test students, whether it's for the dual enrollment program or for regular transition into the fall semester as an F T I C. That is happening. Scholarship opportunities, that is something that we continue to work very diligently with. However, I am very happy to announce that Scholarship Universe for the external scholarships is now live on our website and on the student's passport. So we are currently working with our marketing team. The requests will be sent to our marketing team so that we do a marketing campaign for our students because that link is live and it's ready to accept and match students on Scholarship Universe. Again, these are for the externally vetted scholarships, not fully functional for our internal scholarships just yet.
These are national scholarships.
These are national scholarships, statewide scholarships, to the external scholarships from the college, and that link is already live and working. It's been a soft launch for about a week now, and we're working on those as we continue.
I had a question from an organization, a nonprofit, that asked me, is there a way that we can put our scholarship on, on your software? On the, because I was telling them about Scholarship Universe, because they have a daughter. But they, she also said, well, can our nonprofit put their scholarship on that?
Yes, they can. So we just have to make the decision if that's going to be a scholarship awarded through Laredo College, or if that's going to be a scholarship advertised at Laredo College awarded through an external party, or if that's going to be an external scholarship available to any kid around.
That's a lot of questions. And then if it's an external scholarship that they choose, let's say they, they choose, I don't even, I don't want to say, organization A chooses a student from each high school and gives them a scholarship. When they bring the scholarship here, they take the scholarship to donor relations, so they report it, and then the student goes to, to the financial aid office, I'm assuming, or to the scholarship office with Brenda, right? So then, does that scholarship get entered into the student account and into the student budget?
Yes, so actually, the way it works, it'll first be vetted through donor relations, then we will include it in Scholarship Universe so that the students have the opportunity to apply to the scholarship utilizing Scholarship Universe. That way, when the selection process happens, we are able to allow.
But if they already picked the kid?
Oh, then we just do the D S R, deposit into their account. But eventually then.
I guess my question is, does it become part of the student budget?
Yes, it gets, it gets inputted to the student's wrap award account, and it'll be inputted.
Yes, it will come, it becomes part of their.
Yes, the wrap award is the banner screen that we'll use to input all scholarship.
It's because I wasn't sure if we were doing that right.
Yes, we, we do it in a shape or form. Financial aid drives continue. Financial aid drives were hosted at each individual high school on their given date and time. We try to space them out as much as possible so that we don't overlap two schools at the same time, and we have the most manpower available. In addition to that, partnering with the financial aid office, we did host Saturday events. So that did happen. Actually, October first was our first one, my first day too. So we were here for the financial aid drives. We are hosting additional financial aid drives, super Saturdays throughout the summer. So that'll be a schedule that will be coming out soon so that we're able to promote those too. This is for both our new students and the new recruitment strategies, but also for our current students that need to renew their financial aid application. Unfinished business.
So we are hosting currently unfinished businesses at our high schools. And when unfinished businesses, it's actually if you didn't have the opportunity to come in and finish any business that they have with the Rito College. So we do have a little bit of a breakdown, so we'll, we'll be able to show that to you and kind of see this after the students take right now.
Within this unfinished business, we are doing advising and registration as well. The goal is once we have the student with us there to provide them the full service and the full experience so that the student leaves that moment with eligible their schedule in hand. That way, that way, we don't lose them over the summer and, and they have that, that peace of mind that they've already been registered for classes. And then last but not least, our final event that'll close, what we call our recruitment cycle would be the counselor appreciation at the high school. So these are events that we are hopeful to host either here at Fort Mac or at the South Campus. More in appreciation rather than very informative, very heavily informative, more in appreciation to the counselors for allowing us the partnership that we have that makes all of this possible. So off-campus and community events, we continue to do community tabling. One, one of the things that we want to push forward is LC in the community. With that being said, we did partner with T M U to be at their Discover T M U event. We have also been at the Relay for Life, just branding for the, for the college. Ideally, we would want to set up tables like at the baseball games, now that the season is open, the city's baseball team, and with our community partners and board relations, just LC in the communities, what we're hoping to call it there. Our website continues to be updated. We are part of the website committee, a website advisory committee. And with that being said, we continue to revamp the website to continue to make it student-focused, especially the new prospective students coming in, that they easily have access to request information and to contact anybody in our recruitment department. With that being said, inquiry cards, contact us cards will be on every recruitment piece that we do print out. But at the same time, like previously mentioned at one of the board meetings, ideally, we hope to revamp our business cards, individual business cards, to include a QR code on that business card that will direct everyone to the inquiry card so that any student that submits that inquiry card will contact us easily. And then, of course, we continue to work the referrals. Any student out there that needs assistance, please refer them over to the Office of Recruitment and Enrollment. And we continue to work with our marketing team for the marketing and brand recognition as well, as our exposure on social media. In regards to campus visits, we have designed three different types of campus visits thus far. One of them is our preview day. Our preview day is designed for students of all ages, just kind of come and see a preview of Laredo College. It is more of a walkthrough campus tour style, presentation style, very heavily informational for the students, just one campus experience. If we're going to be here at Fort Mac, we're going to show you Fort Mac, we're going to talk to you about admissions, financial aid, advising, registration, and everything that one particular day, again, very heavily informative for the students. Then we have a second type, which is a day in the life of. These have been a lot of fun and very good comments. You want to talk a little bit about those?
Yes, so a day in the life actually gives a student the opportunity to see themselves, as they call your student, depending on their discipline. So we've been working with this South Campus, it's a bit of your ally health. And so our ally health students, they'll be with them for about four hours, and they take them through every different discipline. So they are actually working with our nursing students, they're working with their P T A students, and then being a student on that, that day. Where our culinary arts are actually doing ranch and mayo, so they're actually working with, with the, with the culinary art instructors and are working on this. And then they get to have a snack at the end. They go over, students that want to do child development, they're actually going into our Camino Brava, and they're working with our students that are with the current, the students that are there at the Camino Brava. And then our automobile, they're actually there with them at the labs. One of the cool things that they just did was actually, they showed them how to paint on a car. So all the students that were there that day painted a car with the students from Laredo College. So it's a neat thing because even before they're a student, they get to become a student for the day. So they're talking to professors, their G manager was actually there with them, talking to them about the ally health. They get to talk to the chairs, so, so they see themselves coming here already even before they made their full transition.
What would create our lead, our lease? Oh, perhaps for junior and senior, right?
Yes, these are more targeted to juniors and seniors because they're the ones that already kind of have more set of what they want to do, so that we want to make it more of a one-on-one experience.
Very good.
Yes, and then becoming a Palomino, that's more of an enrollment management type of visit. It is very task-oriented. If you're going to come in that day, we want to make sure we get your admissions, your financial aid, your advising, your registration, and access to any of the resource, resources that we have on campus. So a lot more transactional. If you're going to be here, we're hoping that you're going to actually complete something, whether it's your Apply Texas or your actual registration, financial aid application of some sort. So Julio did mention a little bit of what the unfinished business event was, and we tried to simplify as much as we could in this graphic that you see here. It consists about ten stops for the student. And ideally, it is hosted at a high school campus at this time. So here, it is hosted at a high school campus, and the idea is the student signs in or signs up to come and visit us. So we, with our partners, with our high school partners, with the counselors, we designated a day where we are perhaps in the library setting, which is a bigger room, bigger setting, computer labs, access to tabling and whatnot. The student comes in, checks in, then the student is sent off to the second stop, which would be the student screening. So our recruiters and the Office of Admissions are actually doing student screening. And what we do during student screening is we're actually checking the student's status. Before sending the student anywhere else, we need to make sure you're ready to be sent. So have you applied? Are you admitted? Are you pending on document? Do you need to clear or hold? What is it that you need to do? We've created some checklist where we'll, we'll let them know what they're pending, and that's how they'll go to the next stop.
Different stops.
Mm-hmm.
This is at the high school.
This is at the high school. So they'll stop with financial aid, student assessment, if they need to pull out their, their testing records, and then advising has to run forces with us. They'll do, they're doing student advising when they can be there, if not recruiters are doing the advising as well. The student scheduling, because one thing is to tell you unique government, another thing is to actually pick which government you want to take. So the student scheduling, and then we're actually doing registration, again, ensuring no student leaves as much as we can the event without being actually registered. In addition to that, they are signing up for student orientation so that we ensure that they pick a date for orientation. They collect some Palomino swag, some Palomino goodies to make sure that they feel part of the college already, and we have a picture moment for them as well.
And I understand that now we are doing student orientation like a mandatory, right?
Some, yeah. Yeah, and, and I'm sure that we'll, we'll get to that with you, but yes, as, as our understanding that it'll be mandatory for all new students incoming, and we're assisting with at least the sign-up of the students for that day. And again, we are assisting with the new student orientation. It helps us in the recruitment strategy to prevent summer melds, which means to keep students engaged over the summer, whether it's by attending orientation, falling in love with the college, and making sure they continue to reach out to us. The recruiters will continue to be a point of contact over the summer so that the student knows that they have somebody to come back to. In the summer, we also look at completing the student's files, making sure that we don't have any document left behind, and that a student's file for admissions and enrollment is completed at the beginning so that then we transition it over to the registrar's office once the student becomes an official student after twelfth class A, which is the transitioning of the class.
So for the summer, one of the things, and I kind of really discuss this with anybody, we want to have, I want to have some events over the summer, at least to have one in July and then one, I mean, in June and then one in July to try to keep it, all of those that are already enrolled, still coming to campus. And so I don't know if we're going to do a Fourth of July watermelon something, or you know, just to open house kind of thing, or maybe it's, I don't know, we're, we're, I need to sit with, with kind of, you know, and brainstorm some ideas and see what we come up with.
So any questions, any suggestions, additions that you may think that we can include in the recruitment strategy?
This is a very high level of work, good job. I mean, I think you all are, sorry, cross-referencing each other, like at all different points, which is very important, so it's harder for kids to fall through the cracks and stuff. So no, I, I, I'm going to, like, here, I think you all are doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to the next slide, I'm sorry. We'll move on to enrollment report and projections for the fall. Mr. President, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment, for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam President. First, Vice President for Student Success and Enrollment, for the record. This evening, enrollment report has been updated from the HANA that you previously received. The enrollment numbers that were in the previous HANA were all, all numbers from about a week ago. In my presentation this evening, the highlighted numbers in yellow represent the current enrollment numbers for summer session one, summer session two, and then for the fall semester. Within the summer session one number, this eleven twelve number is the number that we're, that we're enrolling for our May semester. May semester is a, is a three-week term that will actually commence on May the fifteenth, on Monday, and it will run for three weeks prior to the summer session one beginning. And so within those eleven twelve, we have our, our May semester number, which currently is about three hundred and seventy-six students. When we compare that to last year, our whole May semester was about three hundred and eighty-three, so we're pretty much on par with what we had last year for the May semester. And we still have about three weeks remaining of registration for the May semester, so I'm very confident that, that we'll surpass that number as well. Because there's still time before summer session one begins, which will start on June the fifth, our, we're confident that this number will continue to rise, and so we're again shooting for being on par with, with last year's numbers as well. Now, one, one point to make about summer session one numbers is currently, we have not enrolled our dual academy students, those are dual-credit students that come during the summer. Usually, we typically enroll about twelve hundred students in, in that academy, and so that will add to our summer session one number as well, which currently is not factored in at this time, but we will shortly, once registration ensues.
But is that like the, like a bridge, or is that?
It's a continuation. It's a continuation of dual-credit students, allowing them to get ahead of their under-credit.
That's not the ones that need additional help, like development, okay?
No, no, this is solely just a continuation. Because of how the dual-credit programs are structured in the high schools, right now, they get students to take during the long semesters a total of about fifteen hours at best over fall and spring. But for those that want to get ahead, then they add in the summer component so they can at least get to a point when they're seniors, for them to complete the forty-two hours of core curriculum. And that's how the academy helps with that, with that picture. And so again, some of the academy courses do run in summer one, most of them run summer one. There will be another fraction that runs in the summer session two, and then of course, they'll continue with your dual credit in the fall semester. The next slide represents a history of our fall enrollments. As you can tell, fall enrollments are an ebb and flow of ups and downs throughout the history of our, our numbers. When we look back at the, of the fall twenty-ten and fall twenty-eleven, these were some of the highest peak numbers that we had in enrollment due to largely the recession that was going on at that time. Historically, our numbers have been inverse related to our unemployment. And so whenever we have high unemployment rates, our enrollment numbers tend to peak, tend to rise. And when our unemployment numbers drop, then our enrollment numbers drop as, as well. Students go to work, basically. And so we see the ebb and flow. The anomaly was obviously COVID. We were hoping to have that inverse relationship occur during COVID as well, but students didn't do anything, they didn't work, and they didn't come to school. So, so anyway, that, that, that was the break in the anomaly. Given the average of enrollments that we've had, beginning with fall twenty-eighteen up to fall twenty-twenty-two, I'm projecting that we're looking at a five percent target if we want to keep up with the average. So that amounts to about four hundred and seventy-eight students that we're shooting for to have more of than we had this previously fall semester. And that's divided between dual and between the non-dual students as well. So if we can get to that target of about four hundred and seventy-eight students, close to five hundred students, we should be back on track with the average enrollment that we've had over the last five years. Any questions?
No, I mean, we grow five percent, every fall semester will be in good shape.
We'll be in good shape. So I'm going to pause here because my presentation, it's the same PowerPoint for both of my presentations, but I think up next is Mr. Rivera with orientation.
Yeah, that's item five. Item five, and the Rito College student orientation. Mr. Pedro Rivera.
Hello, good afternoon, Pedro Rivera, Director of Student Life. So today, we'll talk a little bit about student orientation, we'll go over everything involving student orientation, dates, our objectives, things of that nature. So the first thing that I would like to cover with everyone today is, and so objectives, the, the, what we're trying to get to through student orientation. First thing that I do have to say, that student orientation moving forward will be entirely student-centered. How do we get here? So one of the things that I did when I first came in is that I literally sat down with my students, and I told them, hey, what were some of the things that you needed to learn in order to be successful as a student at the Rito College? Did you need to know where the library was at? Did you need to know where to find your advisors? We came up with this, and we developed the orientation schedule, which hopefully later. Moving forward with the objectives, our first objective is to make sure that our students are knowledgeable about the support services and resources that they have at their disposal. We have a lot of these support services available at the Rito College, but one of the things that we need to focus on is making sure that our students know what's But one of the things that we need to focus on is making sure that our students know what's available to. We're also focusing on making sure that our students are familiar with our campus. Uh, this is mainly knowing where things are at. I know that I have to be advised in order to get registered for classes, but I don't know where the advisors are at. Take me to where my advisors can come. We also would like to start building affinity to the institution. Making sure that students feel that they're a part of their college and that they play a very important part, part in the radio college. And we'll do that throughout our student orientation and soon as we come back to walk community, which we'll also cover. And last but certainly not least, we also want to make sure that we build connections. We want to build connections with our student orientation leaders. Which is basically the student staff that we have working through the office of student life. But also building connections with other students, right? Building connections with your peers, building connections with the people. You will be taking classes with, so that we can have peer support services. So I mentioned a little bit about our student orientation leaders. Our student orientation leaders are student personnel through the office of student life. These people, as the name implies, will be leading these student orientation sessions. Now, the first thing that we have to keep in mind is that this is particularly. A developmental job opportunity for our student leaders that work in the office of student life. They get to understand how different parts of the college work. And they, most importantly, they're able to become a resource for the students themselves. So, once the semester starts, I know that I at least know one person that's here. That knows where some things are located, where they can give me information about where I can go to get my financial aid checked out. Or where I can submit my bacteria meningitis one, for example. So it's a peer support service structured as coming through our office. Um, and it also allows for our student employees that work in our office to be knowledgeable. In case we have students that pop up in our office and they have any questions, then we can ask for them. This is provide a better service for our incoming students. Now, here are the dates that we have for our student orientation. If you notice, we have three dates in the main campus in Port Magnitosh, and we have four dates in the south campus. Now, the reason why we have more days in the south campus is because the. The south campus, the infrastructure in the south campus is a little bit different than the, than the infrastructure that we have here. So we have to have more sessions in order to be able to accommodate all the students that want to be part of the orientation session in the south campus. Whenever we register students for orientation, we tell them choose the session that is going to take place. At the campus, you're going to be taking over your classes at, so they are familiar with their main campus survey. Now, we do finish our published orientation sessions on August third. But we are planning on having an additional session on August tenth, if need be. So we are ready to make those accommodations if we have to. Uh, but we are expecting to have approximately two hundred students per session. Those two hundred students will be divided into seven groups, led by two or three student orientation leaders. That will be ensure that each group has about twenty five, thirty people per group. And we can ensure that we can actually make a genuine connection with the students that we're working.
Um, so the issue on the south campus is we don't have a room large enough to accommodate two hundred students.
Yes, so we are working on, on. Making sure that we divide enough rooms. We are working on having some sessions outside and we'll cover that once we go over the, the schedule. But we are trying our best to accommodate as many students as possible in the south, because we do have. A percent of non-students, the students we registered so far, that are very interested in attending south campus orientation. Now, this is an example of our check-in. Before our, our schedule, before we go into the. The schedule, yes, orientation is mandatory, and as I was mentioning in the previous presentation, orientation is mandatory for all incoming students. We're trying to get as many students as possible to complete a face-to-face session, because we want to build that genuine connection to them. However, we have already started planning and developing a alternative online orientation. For all those that are not able to make it during the summer. This will be taking place on Canvas. It's going to be entirely self-paced. Canvas allows for us to keep track of the people that we add into the class. Check how many hours and minutes they dedicated to certain work, certain, uh, assignments and things of that nature. And so it provides us a very good control to, to know. How exactly our students are progressing through, through the online alternative student orientation.
But we don't want to make that the default. That is only for extreme cases.
Yes. Our main goal right now is to get as many people to register face-to-face whenever we go, whenever we participate in these, uh. Unfinished businesses at the high schools, for example, we sell orientation to them. We tell them about all the good things they can get out of it, and we basically go over briefly the schedule that, that we provide to them. All of the sessions are intentional in nature. So we provide our check-in. The first thing that we do at the check-in is that we provide them a palomino swag bag. We provide them with a T-shirt. So they can start wearing green on campus. We provide the water bottle because they will be walking throughout the day. We provide them with informational packets so the sessions will have throughout the day. And, and just overall, we're trying to welcome them. It's a gift of welcome to our camps. We proceed to our welcome, we go over the expectations, and then we, we focus on college training basics. In this case, our college training basics are platforms that students have to use. Pretty much on a daily basis, password, canvas, and reviewers. And so these sessions are actually led by our student orientation leaders. The main reasoning behind that is we want for our student orientation leaders to use layman's terms whenever they're working with students. So they can basically provide them with the best experience in learning how to use these platforms. And just finding how useful they can actually be from a student's perspective. Moving forward, we have a campus tour. We try to do this as early as possible because the summer heat is up, right? And so we do multiple things throughout this campus tour. As the name implies, we take people on campus. We show them, hey, this is where your class is going to be taking, if you are a nursing student. This is where your math classes are going to take place. This is the library. This is the bookstore. But we also will be having a resource fair slash student organization fair in the Maravio Gym or in Billy Hall in the south campus. And this provides our students an opportunity to go meet different student organization leaders, joining student organizations. And answering any other questions to participating college departments or offices that are there.
Let me ask you a question. Um, when you're doing, uh, the orientation or they go on their campus tour, do they have a copy of their schedule? With them or, or are they already enrolled? Like?
They should have already received a copy of their schedule. Now, here, this is a great question. Another thing that we will be doing throughout these campus tours, and this is something that we, we already worked out with the advising team is. If we have a student that has not yet registered for classes or that has not yet, uh, received their financial aid. Our student orientation leaders will take them directly to those offices so they can take care of this during orientation. They have approximately, um, an hour and thirty to take care of these things. And so we're trying to get multiple persons. So this is our section that students have. Free time, quote unquote, to take care of registering for classes, rejecting their financial aid or submitting any type of documentation they may depend.
And for example, if a student was registered for certain classes and then decided. To retake T S I or something, and so they were able to. Not have to take developmental and they want to change their schedule, it should be done during that time. So that the advisors are available and, and we have, you know, the most updated. For schedules so that we know what's available for students.
Yes. Another thing that I will mention here is our student orientation registration form. Actually has three questions that we ask the student right there and then. The first question is whether the student has been advised or not. If they press no, we receive a report that we can share with the advisor to get them registered. Uh, the second question is, have they been registered or not? Same process. If they say no, we send them over to the advisors and we try to get them registered. And advised prior to attending their session. That's, that's what we try to do. We also do, we also. No, so, for example, those reports are provided to the advising team every Friday. And they call them, they email them, they text them.
Oh, is that, uh, onsite?
Yes, well, that could be done onsite or we can have students come to campus as well. We find a way, well, the advisor finds a way to work with the students that are pending these things. But these are all things that we're trying to take care of prior to orientation. Because what happens is, let's say we don't take care of them. Maybe we could have a group of fifty people that need to be registered and it's going to be really hard to accommodate them in the, in the advising office. With a limited number of advisors or a limited number of space.
So, Pedro, why don't, when they check in, at check-in, could you ask them those three questions again?
Yes.
At check-in so that then by the time they get to academic support at two ten, the advisors are aware of. Who's in this group that needs, is gonna need help and we need to bring in more people.
Yes, yeah, that is very cool. And we, like I said, we're constantly checking those reports every single week. Every single time that we have unfinished business or we start seeing that we have an influx of a number of people that are registering. We go in there, we check these and we share this information with the offices that need to know this information. Yes. Um, moving forward, uh, with the resource fair, another thing that we're doing is. We're trying to provide incentives for students to participate in these fairs and so we have giveaways that we do throughout these, these fairs. We will also have lunch. One of the main selling points for orientation, if I'm being candid here, is that we tell the students, hey. Come over, you get free breakfast, lunch and dinner. You get free T-shirts, you get free information, you get to make friends. And so lunch is provided as part of the orientation program. We also provide them with some sort of academic support, specifically. The, uh, class and the writing center. We tell them, hey, if you're struggling with an essay, you can head over here. And you can have some help when it comes to that. Financial aid is also covered there. Financial aid is something that is coming directly from financial aid staff members. This is not coming from student orientation leaders. We're trying to make sure that there's. Actual, uh, staff that is providing that information to them. We go over palomino pride, provide some information about the history of the college and we try to build that affinity to the university, to the institution as I mentioned before. Uh, we also cover counseling, Title Nine, and disability services. If you notice, all of this takes care, uh, takes a place before five P M. And the reasoning for that is, we do have some students that tell us, hey. I want to attend the orientation, but I am unable to stay till ten P M.
Sure.
What's the latest I can say? The latest I can say is till six P M. Is it fine? We say, yes, stay till six P M. Because that way, we ensure that they go through all the necessary information that they need. For the student's success. Anything after five, if I'm being honest, is fun and just team building and making friends. We have a dinner, we're trying to have a calentada, so the students have, you know, the opportunity to hang out with people, have fun, make friends. We're also gonna have a gym experience where people can go work out, play basketball, play chess, different things, listen to music. And then at the very end of the night, we're having a VIP party. Very important palomino. So we'll be having, we'll be having a pool party in the main campus. And we'll be having a water themed inflatables and water balloons party over at the south in the sports complex that we have over there. And we are making sure, if you notice, we have, uh, intervals of ten minutes in between each session. The reasoning for that is we want students to walk around campus and start getting familiar with them. Another part of that is it's difficult for us to have students sitting down in one area. For longer than thirty minutes and having them pay attention after twenty five minutes. And so having them constantly move around. Shows them the campus, but also keeps them engaged throughout the day. Now, once student orientation is over, our job is still not done. What we do then is that we start focusing on Welcome Week. Once people start attending the sessions. We already have access to their phone numbers and their emails, and we immediately start telling them, hey, thank you for coming to orientation. Here's the next step. Once we start school in August, join into Welcome Week. Welcome Week is going to take place the first week of classes. And it's quite literally a week's worth of events. Every single day of the week. We'll have an event that is tailored towards building affinity to the institution. So some of the planned events that we have so far is a me, green, Monday swag swap. Um, the reasoning behind this is we see a lot of tamu t-shirts or we see a lot of T-shirts from other institutions. And what we're gonna tell the students is, hey, bring your old tamu T-shirt and I'm gonna give you a brand new to the college T-shirt, so you can wear it. Yeah. Uh, moving forward, I would like to see more green and gold on campus. And so another one of the events that we're gonna be having is you create your own unique. Tie-dye T-shirt using yellow or, well, gold and green. So we give those T-shirts to anybody that wants to participate. It provides an opportunity for people to make their own shirt and they have something that they made that reminds them of the college. We will also have Bill the Palomino, which is basically South Animals. And the company that worked for this actually creates mini L C T-shirts for your bears, for your palomines. And that's also something that could be tie-dyed. Um, I would love to have a lot of the, yeah, both of the others, you know, in this, in this particular geographical area, both of the others are great. Um, and I like them, so we'll, we'll have some of the yes. For the first, for the first day, we'll have a donut get lost, which is basically an opportunity to grab a quick donut or a quick great pastry. But you also get a campus map, so you don't get lost and you know where things are taking place. We would also like to have a school supply drive, which is going to be a partnership with our trading station so that students know, hey. The trading station not only has some sort of supply if you ever need them in case of an emergency. But we also have food, especially with the changes that we're making to the trading station. If you're hungry one day, if, if, if you need, you know, baby formula, whatever it is you need, the trading stations there to help you. Uh, and that's not least, a continuation of those three source fairs, student organization fair that we, that we'll have throughout the summer orientation. We want to make sure that we're consistent and we continue bringing them, once the semester begins.
And are they gonna take place in different areas of the college or all of them are gonna be at the case or?
Most of them will take place in the case and just because of the fact that it's right in the middle of campus. But we will try to spread these events as much as possible. The, 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 the location that makes the most sense and the most logical is because it's right in the middle.
Sure.
We can get as many people there. My office is there. We need something we can send people to, so we'll get it.
And they know where to go always at.
Exactly.
And, and what we're doing right now with food, uh, and I'm gonna ask, uh, as soon as he's done, I'm gonna ask. Um, Mr. Castillo to come up and explain what we're doing with food. I know it's not. Fully on the agenda, but it, it ties into Welcome Week. So I don't know, you, you wanna talk about that? Um, because as part of the whole. Package of orientation and Welcome Week is, is giving them the resources that they need and, and. Better mention some, but, um, I think one of the key things is, is what we're doing with food. And so during orientation and during, um, Welcome Week, we're gonna talk to them about. Um, the food pantry, how they can access food from the food pantry and the palomino pantry. But, uh, also how they can access food in the cafeteria.
Yes, uh, Camilo Castillo Junior, Associate Vice President of Student Engagement, for the record. Um, yes, to add on regarding this spring semester, we started a new initiative here with our food vendors. We started a meal program for our students. Through a funding source that we were able to receive from the Hearst money, we're able to fund approximately about thirty eight hundred students here on campus. That are full-time college students and that are also identified as being on-campus students. So that way we can retain the students to stay here on campus, use a lot of the resources that mature that you had, I didn't mention. Now, one of the key components that we're gonna be doing during the summer as part of orientation is to really educate our students and say, hey. You know what? We're a community college, but we also provide the resources that you need to be successful here on campus. So one of the resources happens to be on meal plan. No longer are the days that the student has to travel off campus and drive over the bridge and. Trying to figure out what times does the train come in and, you know, am I gonna make it on time? Is the train blocking the way or so forth? Now the student can stay here on campus and they can visit any of our three vendors that we have here to get a meal for themselves. And so this would be a resource that's gonna be available for them in the summer, because we're working on trying to extend our meal program. By the way, is a free meal program right now because of our funding source that we have. And we're looking at figuring out other funding sources for us to provide our students, not only in the summer, but also in the fall semester. So during Welcome Week, will be also an initiative that we are going to educate our students saying, duh. Here's your student ID card that you received during orientation, but at the same time, this ID card not only gets you access into. All the resources here on campus, but it also gives you a meal plan that you can use either here at Fort Mac or at the south campus. And so it's one of the benefits of being a Laredo College student, much less a palomino here at these campuses now. One of the other key components that we're working on is now incorporating our meal program and incorporate our palomino cafe. Which is our star most here on campus and also our coffee shop that we just have at our south campus. So that way our students stay more here on campus. Now, one of the benefits that we've had with the meal program is that we've extended our. Well, our vendors, our dining facilities from two P M, we've extended it all the way to eight P M. And so our evening student, our non-traditional student and our adult education student does have now a resource to come on campus. And use our meal programs here and speak with our vendors. And so that's one of the initiatives that we're working on right now in incorporating the meal program. As part of the orientation program.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So now we have to bring twenty twenty to your graduation. So we have to bring twenty-two year graduation.
Once again, President, Vice President for Students Success and Enrollment. Uh this evening, Madam Chair, I'd like to give you an overview of. How our awards are going to be shaping up for our graduation uh this coming May twelfth. Uh currently, uh for the first time, we're going to be having our graduation ceremony along with the bachelors of nursing. Uh graduates, so they'll be joining the rest of this college population uh of graduates. So for this year, we're looking at about thirteen graduates out of the B S N program. Followed by two hundred and thirty-five students who will be receiving their associate of arts. Uh that also includes the dual-credit students that are also getting the same credential as well. Uh two hundred and ninety-seven are are programmed to receive their associate of science. Uh and about a hundred and forty-seven are are scheduled to receive their associate in applied science. Uh obviously, our biggest award is always our certificates awards, and right now we're looking at about three hundred and seventy-seven certificate awards. Our occupational skills awards, which are technically our micro-credentialing awards. These are typical awards that are for one semester coursework, a few courses, and you get an O S A. Or occupational skill award. There's about twenty-five of those that will be awarded as well. So overall, the total is about a thousand ninety-four uh graduates. Uh that we're expecting to have uh at the end of this spring semester. Uh when we isolate uh the graduates that are in our dual-credit partnership program. Uh we have a breakdown of how each of the different high schools fairs with their awards. Uh Sierra Rosa High School will have twelve graduates uh receiving their associate of arts or their associate of science degrees. Uh Lyndon Bing Johnson High School, because of their two early college high schools that are there, will have about a hundred and thirty-eight graduates in total. Martin High School, because of their early college there, uh is forty-six graduates. Nixon will have sixty-one. Uh United South, uh Zapata and 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 uh United South. And United North, rather, uh do not have an award yet at the associate degree level. But uh this coming fall semester, they will be launching the early college high schools at Old Alexander and United. So within four years' time, they'll be added to this column. Uh in terms of certificates, overall, you can see the certificate breakdown by high school campuses as well. So that'll be for a total of about a hundred and fifty-six. Uh high school students will be receiving their their various certificates in different occupational skill sets and so forth. Uh and then twenty-four students will be receiving their occupation skills award, which is the equivalent. Uh one semester of of technical coursework that they completed. Uh so overall, we have a four hundred and thirty-seven graduates that are part of the one thousand ninety-four that are actually coming from our high schools. Uh so that contributes a lot to our our success of funding, uh which is now going to be our outcomes funding moving forward. And so we're very fortunate that the partnerships continue uh at the level that they are. Basically, our our graduation ceremony will actually be in two phases. Uh we will have phase one, which will be on May the twelfth in the morning, uh that will be at ten A M. Uh and the graduates there are the B S N, uh the uh the associate of science and the certificates and the occupational skill award. Uh so it's about a total of five hundred and sixty-two. Uh and then on on later on that afternoon at four P M, uh then the associate of arts and the associate of science will be graduating. Uh starting at four P M. So currently, right now, it it's an even split between the number of graduates in both ceremonies. Um we'll find out at the end who actually shows up on that day and so and so forth, but more or less, given our estimates. It's pretty much in split at this time.
All of this information was sent out to all employees just this afternoon. I sent it out uh from our from my office. Uh ideally, we we should. Factor in about two hours per ceremony. Um that's what we're calculating.
Jessica, the Associate Vice President of Railway Management, for the record. Um just to add on to that uh email communication that went out. We are uh expecting to open the doors to the public an hour before each ceremony. That includes um students in the lineup, faculty in the lineup, and all public and and community guests. That will be attending the the ceremony. Um the ceremonies will take place at the same Soto Arena. We were just there this afternoon, um hence the email communication going out today. Um to make sure that everything is in line for our ceremonies. Um again, we are hopeful that all five hundred plus will show up to the ceremony. However, we are prepared to make sure uh we accommodate for the students that do show up. Again, this event is now shaping um a lot student-centered, a lot very festive. Um we will have surprises there at the end of the ceremony uh for all of you to enjoy. We're hopeful for confetti, music, lights, and whatnot, again, celebrating the students' accomplishments. And ensuring that they leave uh Laredo College without Laredo College pride and that Laredo College spirit.
Any questions?
Any questions? I don't have any questions.
Anything with that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, um we're just very grateful that you're having the meeting. Uh hopefully, next month, we can focus on on uh advising and some of our retention strategies. That that we've implemented. I I know that um. Andrea, who runs our advising center, has been really swamped, and so I'd like to. Maybe next month, if we can focus on on the strategies that they've implemented on on how we're advising and then. How we're also including um faculty advisors and student advisors, and and she's got a lot of plans as well. And so next month, we'll we'll focus on that. We'll still give you the enrollment report and and an update, but. But we'll add that segment so that you're aware or the committee's aware of. What our team is doing for um in that in that arena as well.
Okay, good, good.
Okay.
Okay, so nothing further, um. We'll adjourn the meeting.
No, it's uh it's like five fifty-five.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.